Nothing to report. Three A, the claim was denied. Three B, the claim was denied. The confidential minutes were approved. You wouldn't mind standing for the pledge of allegiance, please?
We will just.
There's a curve ball.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that will be fixed after this meeting. The American flag is always supposed to be on the left to the audience. To my military standards, excuse me. Okay, we will go on to start our meeting here. Public matters not on the agenda, discussion items only, no action will be taken. Any person may address the board upon this time on any subject within jurisdiction of Amritsar, Amritsar County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and or committee for report and recommendation for possible action. There is a three-minute window. Anybody for public matters? Morning.
My name is Cindy Grandbois. I'm a member of the community. And today I wanted to talk to you about Pine Grove Camp. The demographics at Pine Grove Camp have changed significantly over the years. Up until the nineties or so, nonviolent offenders only were accepted into the program. That has changed. There's been a recent change from DJJ over to DAI. But even before that, violent offenders have been accepted into Pine Grove Camp. When I say violent offenders, I mean everything up to and included convicted murderers. Almost every inmate that has been received from the county border program has been convicted of murder. There's been no transparency by the Department of Corrections to let the county know what is in their backyard, what is being housed at a minimum level security facility up there in Pine Grove, which has very little security. There has been numerous walkaways in this county from roadwork assignments. And I'm not saying they don't do great work for the county because they do and very much appreciate it. My objection is that there's been no change in security being provided for the upgraded status of these violent offenders. Every once in a while, an correctional officer is assigned to go out with these crews, but most of the time it is one Cal Fire captain. Now, when these inmates go to the dentist or the doctor, they are handcuffed, they are taken by an armed correctional officer wearing a bulletproof vest. But when they put these murderers out in our community with almost no supervision, there's no security present. They are depending on county employees, city employees, to also provide supervision for these crews when they're out doing roadwork assignments. I don't think that's a reasonable thing to expect firefighters and county road employees to provide security or supervision for these proven killers. I would like the board to conduct an investigation to verify that what I'm saying is correct, that they are indeed now predominantly proven murderers, murder one, and that the county at the minimum request that a correctional officer be present every single time any crew leaves that camp and is working within our county. Some light being shed on this because I noticed when the three walked away from a work assignment in 2019 prior to COVID, the community wasn't that upset. Oh, we had some walkaways. They have no idea. They think there's still burglary twos and vehicle thefts. They have no idea the level of criminal that is now being housed at Pine Grove Camp. And I think that there is a responsibility to have transparency and let the community know what is in their backyard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, approval of the agenda?
Just a quick comment.
Yes?
Chair. I would say Ms. Grandbois is right. If that is the case up at the Pine Grove Camp, I didn't know it. So I think probably the community doesn't know it. And it wouldn't hurt us to send a letter requesting, hey, what type inmates do you have here? And ask them.
I would warn you that the California Department of Corrections likes to play word games. They like to tell you that they are nonviolent offenders, but they don't use our definition of a nonviolent offender.
Well, they changed that. They changed that years ago to what? From what was violent to nonviolent. I remember the changes were, I think the board sent a letter complaining about, because it's shocking, nonviolent was like he only killed 10 people.
Yeah. Well, and they also, Pine Grove Camp is unique in that when they escape, they will not announce what the crimes these escapees were convicted of due to privacy rights because they were convicted as juveniles. So when there is a manhunt going on for these, the general public, I'm not even sure our sheriff's office knows just what level of offender these people are. And I did print out a few articles and stuff if you're interested.
I think the sheriff's department is given notification. And, you know, as of 2010, when I left the camp, there were convicted murders there at that time. They were the model prisoners because all they wanted to do was go home. So anyway, I'm just saying with CDCR, it's a different situation now.
Are you aware?
I wouldn't say they're all convicted murders until we do the investigation and find out. But there are more serious crimes.
Are you aware that they are now accepting level threes?
Uh huh.
I find that personally offensive as somebody from a correctional background to put a level three inmate into a level one secure, I can't say, sorry, facility.
The reason they're accepting them is because there's not enough personnel otherwise to fill the camps.
At what cost to the public? Like I said, I would like to see an increase in security provided. If you're going to put a higher level inmate, the least you could do is stop depending on county employees, firefighters, to provide the security for this level of offender. And they do now, the only exemptions that they don't take is arson, a sex offender, or supposedly a history of walkaway. Kidnapping's acceptable, torture's acceptable, murder first is acceptable, and they are now taking those up to eight years left to serve. It used to be only three years left to serve, and they've now pushed it back to eight years to serve.
You've gone over your time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else from the board? Okay, looking for the approval of agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda with the two addendums.
Okay.
Second.
Those addendums are going to be five D for addendum one, five E for addendum two, and we'll move the minutes to five F. Approval of the items on consent? Anybody from the public want to talk? Oh, excuse me, requests from survey department to pull six O, six Q, and six R. Now, any public comment or from anybody on Zoom?
Who approves the consent agenda with the modification?
Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You know what? I didn't call for the vote on the agenda, the regular agendas. Excuse me. Call for the vote also on the regular agenda.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Cool. Now we go on to five A, Measure M, revenue distribution for fiscal year 2023, '24. Suggested action is approval. Yes, sir?
Good morning, board. Dominic Moreno, Star Creek Fire, also President and Chief Association. So in front of you is the approval for fiscal year '23, '24 for Measure M. It was approved by AFPA last week, last Thursday. And then we basically bring it to the board to get approval so we can get it to the auditor's office, so we can get, instead of her have to make changes, she can actually start fresh every year, so.
Okay. Anybody else from the public? Anybody on Zoom?
Work getting done in July. First time.
Ever.
Ever, last long time.
Okay. Back to the board for a motion?
I'd make that motion to approve Measure M that's presented.
Second.
Okay, I heard. Supervisor Neto, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, on to five B, discussion on the progressive progress relative to the proposed wine ordinance. The committee has met and developed a proposed ordinance that must still be reviewed by the planning commission before possible adoption by the board supervisors. This item will review with their recommendation except potential changes before going on to the planning commission.
If it's okay, Mr. Chair, I'll kind of lay the groundwork here. But in the land use committee, Supervisor Forrester and myself held a number of, I guess, hearings with the public. We invited everybody from the Shenandoah Valley area and around the county to provide input regarding change, possible changes of the wine ordinance to address things like sound lighting, or noise, that is, lighting and traffic. We also heard input on signage as well as rest, you know, food and things like that. But we focused primarily on mitigations to noise and to lighting and traffic. And we looked at a number of ordinances from other counties along with our planning director. And the use of a setback, which we've used recently, seemed to be something that was used quite a bit. So we've, in this proposed or draft ordinance, we've adopted the uses of setbacks of the tasting room. We've actually listened to the input from the wineries, and we've extended tasting room, the ability to have your tasting room open seven days a week, and even increased it by one hour. Also allowed all of the wineries to participate in the Amritsar Vintner Association events and wine club events. This is to promote their wine, which we are in favor of. You know, producing wine is an agricultural use. And then we also addressed or considered social events. These would be your meet and greets as well as potential weddings. And there were, depending on whether the setback could be achieved or not, and also we wanted to address what we refer to as a major road versus a minor road, as a kind of a mechanism to, you know, I guess, address, you know, large amounts of traffic on roads that are really, are very narrow, windy, not heavily populated, certainly not well-lit, not much of a shoulder, and discourage, you know, large event centers and, you know, events. So we have a draft of what that looks like. It's a one-page, there's a glossary of terms. And again, if you can meet a 200-foot setback, then you can have all of the wine tasting events, the club events, the participation, and your social events. If you can meet a 200, a 400-foot setback, then you're eligible for what we call social events, which could be up to 400 people. This could be your larger weddings. And then if you can't achieve the 200-foot setback, or you're located on a minor road, then there are decreased, you know, abilities for the social events, but certainly you can still participate in ABA events, wine club events, and tasting room hours of operation.
Just a couple add-ons.
Sure.
The last point we talked about, we're bringing this to the board for, to see if there's concurrence or differing of opinion, but the minimum setback right now is 50 feet. So the discussion is, do we want to leave that in place? Do we want to make that larger? The other setback limitations would still be in place, as Supervisor Axe pointed out. Vintner Association is in substantial agreement with what we proposed. They do not agree, or they do not buy into, as well as many people don't buy into using the road designations. We felt that was very important because every time we get a problem here, it's due to the road designation, what type of road it is, is it more of a rural road? So we felt that was important to leave in. The issue of giving wineries actually more time to stay open, more discretion on when they would be allowed to schedule their days of operation has to do with comments we received that if you limit some of these wineries to specific days, you're actually concentrating the traffic. So let them decide, and let's try and disperse the traffic even more. The, anyone who's got rights now will maintain those rights, they'll be grandfathered in. We're actually talking about creating a second ordinance with the new changes. So we put a lot of work into this so far, but at this point, we felt it was time to bring it to the board for input, take it back to the land use committee, and then have our planning staff put together the language for the ordinance, bring it back to the board for a notice of resolution, notice of, is that right? Notice of intention.
It's a resolution of intent.
Resolution of intention. And then take it to the planning commission from there. With this kind of timing now, we weren't going to bring it to the board today, but being that the agenda was so light, we're actually looking at trying to make some headway before we get into harvest, and then taking a hiatus for probably two months during harvest, and then starting it up again about the November timeframe. Is that, is that correct? That's kind of what we're looking at?
Yes.
We don't want to have the Vintners' attention diverted from their most important objective is to harvest their grapes and process them.
And I think also before staff commits time to developing an ordinance, the board should, you know, weigh in on what they feel at this point.
We've done this on most of the issues before land use, bringing them to the board, especially contentious issues, and try to get input from the board before we proceed.
Supervisor Cruz, Supervisor Neto?
Are there now existing some of the wine tasting rooms that only operate on a five or four-day-a-week schedule?
Yes, but...
So they would be moved into the, everybody'd be seven days.
Potentially. One caveat or one thing I should point out is, at the very beginning of this one-page draft, right now, everything applies to A and, A and AG.
Okay.
Why is there R1A here? So R1A always has to be approved by a conditional use permit. So these would all be kind of by right uses once it's been approved. Can you?
Sure. Chuck, maybe the planning department. The reason R1As listed is because the land use committee felt that the planning commission needed some parameters or limits when authorizing use permits for any tasting rooms in the R1A district, rather than it being open-ended.
Okay, but R1A is still a conditional use permit. It has to be approved case by case, and there are R1As that have, I think, only five days of operation, correct?
Right, and that, those situations wouldn't change.
That wouldn't change.
They're tied to the use permit conditions.
Okay. I guess the AG is going to be Williamson Act primarily?
AG is, yeah, Williamson Act and the land uses that are included on Williamson Act parcels, including those that aren't developed, are tied to the contract. So you can't, even if you change the ordinance, you can't take those uses away without a contract amendment. So those will stay in place, you know, as long as the property's enrolled in the Williamson Act. But the new ordinance would apply to new enrollments in the Williamson Act.
You have a question. How would a food truck fit into this mix? Would it be even?
It's not addressed. It's not part of this.
Okay, good enough.
So, you know, we took input on food, you know, restaurants and signage, but we have not focused on any of that.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think it's really an issue, but I just wanted to just make sure it wasn't something that's underneath this, so.
The thing that came out loud and clear during the multiple meetings we held was that wine and food go together, and that there needs to be sources of food up there while people are consuming wine.
No, I get that. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't limiting food trucks in this. I didn't believe you were, but I just wanted to clarify that. As far as the setbacks, sometimes you have smaller parcels in maybe Shenandoah Valley. Question I'd have, if all neighbors agreed that, hey, they're okay with lessening that setback, is that something that could be done?
It could be done through a variance.
Okay, so if they came in and said, hey, all my neighbors are okay with me building my winery, you know, because sometimes they feed off each other. So that could be done under a variance in?
You know, that's, that's one of my questions, is that parking, you know, I don't see anything talking about parking setbacks, you know, because that's, you know, something we've gone through in the past is, is parking setbacks from one of the wineries that have come back before the board. For myself, I'm normally always a designated driver, so I'm sitting in my vehicle with it running because it's hot. And so, you know, those setbacks from another residence would be an important thing that I think should be put into this.
Well, that's the issue we had with La Mesa.
Yeah.
With the limousines sitting there on the property line with their, with their engines running and air conditioning, so they have air conditioning.
Right.
And who gets the fumes? The neighbor.
Right, and that's kind of what I'm, you know, because, you know, it says here, 200-foot setback, cannot meet 200-foot setback, you know, that it doesn't, we're not saying anything about the parking, or where it is located, or, you know, try to keep it away from residences, you know, so that, you know, you're not impacting, you know, the resident as much as possible, you know, trying to, you know, making sure we're looking at it from that aspect.
But right now, Chuck, the setback is really the wine tasting room?
That was the intent when, when we were discussing these and having the public meetings, but we did get some comments, there's some questions asking, well, if the taste, if you have a tasting room, but you have outdoor events that may be 100 or 200, 300 feet away from the tasting room, where does this, what does a setback apply to? It should be bonded premises, or, but that could go to the property line in some cases. Yeah, and that's, you know, our noise ordinance and, you know, the interference of vehicles near another neighbor's property can be a serious, you know, inconvenience. So for myself, I would like, you know, to, as it becomes before the planning commission, add something else that we should be really definitely looking at is the other associated items that go along with the tasting room. Okay. Any other comments before I open up to the public?
Yeah, I have another one. It talks about as far as the setbacks, that's on, would that go like property ownership? Or it could say if one of us own three parcels, are you going by the parcel as far as the setback, or by a different ownership?
By parcel.
So if I own five parcels, I couldn't build a winery close to one of my other parcels?
Correct.
Well, you can build the winery, it's just that you would have, if you can't meet the 200-foot setback, then you would have reduced privileges or, you know.
I think that's a problem because sometimes you...
You can merge your property together.
It's the same, I could see maybe, I'm just thinking about that, if it's the same ownership, I wouldn't see that problem unless they sold a parcel, and if you sell the parcel...
That's the problem. I mean, if they, if they want to have a business there, a winery, then they should consider merging the properties if they want to overcome that issue.
I did have one other, I'm sorry.
I'll have to think about that one.
One other question we've had is lighting. Is there any way of requesting lighting to go down late in the evening, you know, after the facility is closed, to change it over to motion-sensitive lights so that they will come on when there's activity on the facility? And then soon as that, that type of thing goes, you know, they leave?
We could consider the dark skies ordinance.
I understand we can, but that, that would not, the dark skies ordinance would not cover that because that is a business, and we did not, dark skies ordinance did not cover businesses.
Well, we could, we could include something like that. But it's not, it's really not included in this draft version. We didn't include lighting per se.
No, I understand, I just, those are items that we've talked about. I just, those are items that we, we've talked about. Um, you know, that's...
We could ma, we could have a lighting ordinance that ensures that everything is shielded and down-facing, um...
Again, it's not something I'm really looking for down fa, you know, the, the full dark guys, you know, just a si, you know, simple motion-sensitive, so it shuts at a certain time at night, you're turning it into a motion-sensitive type of thing. Because they need, they still need to keep security. Security is a, you know, as we've seen, is, is a priority.
Supervisor Cruz talked to electricians in the past. They say most of that is covered in the, the ordinances now. Um, the bigger issue really for people in the valley, light is an issue, but the bigger issue is noise from major events.
Agreed. But I think that's part of the thing that you've covered on, onto this.
Yes, speaking of noise, that's where, I don't have a problem with music amplified indoors, sometimes I do wonder about outdoors a little bit, um, because depending on, you know, what the atmosphere is like, that particular night, um, it carries farther. Um, that's a concern, I'd have a little, a little concern about outdoor amplified music until 10 o'clock. And did you?
That's county ordinance, so...
Well, I understand that, but that's, I mean, we can't have a change on that. It's something, something to think about. Um, so I, I agree, noise has been probably one of the main, probably the biggest complaint I've heard by far. Um, and that was probably, a lot of that was more, more geared more towards maybe, um, concerts, some of it, and then maybe some of these people have weddings and people, when they're getting married, they want to celebrate, which, hey, I get it, but sometimes the neighbors, they don't mind one or two or three or four, but, you know, ongoing bothers them.
Well, that was for the, for the larger events, they would, they would have to achieve a formidable footstep at, so you wouldn't be able to put it on a necessarily a small parcel.
No, that, yeah, I'd probably address it okay, yeah.
I mean, it's something, I mean, can, you know, you can always argue that the sound can travel, you know, depending on the air temperature and things like that, and it's less wind at night, but, um, it's what other counties seem to be using as well, so, um, it addresses some of it. Is it perfect? No.
A lot of those that do concerts and large weddings are already grandfathered in.
That's true.
Part of the problem is we've given this to the Vintner Association over the last 20 years two times, and both times they ended up at, uh, standstill with it.
Well, one, one thing is it's, a lot of times, you know, uh, I guess you'd call it the bar changes and part of, I think, a big part of, uh, what brings business into wineries in the counties, it was not even just wineries, but even to the shops and the general areas, is people are looking for entertainment and something to do. And, you know, I think if you're, if, for just selling wine up there, I think, uh, Shenandoah Valley is gonna, would probably perish.
Well, I think that, um, you know, one of the philosophies that Supervisor Forester I, I adopted is that these are, these are agricultural areas. I mean, this is an agricultural business. It's not, you know, it's not a commercial, you know, per se. It's not, you know...
I, I agree with that, but it's, um, i-if, if you kept it strictly just selling wine, it probably, that agriculture area would probably generally go away. Um, it's just the nature of the beast. It used to be when you had, there wasn't that many wineries throughout the state where, yeah, that business model would probably, uh, fly, but now you got, oh, there's a lot of wineries, a lot of competition, um, and I think people more so than ever, they want to, um, they want to go somewhere and have fun. And, and wine is part of that, but they also want a little, little something extra, and I, I think you probably addressed it with, what you have in some of your changes. Um, and the 400-foot setback would probably address that maybe, uh, amplified music outdoors, that's, that's a fair ways.
Okay, do we want to open up to the public? Ready? Okay, anybody from the public?
Good morning, Chair Supervisors. My name is Diane Kinderman. I'm with the law firm of Abbott and Kinderman based in Sacramento, and I'm here today on behalf of the Cherachillo family. They own eight acres of vineyards on Sutter Ione Road, and they, of course, have been participating in the land use committee's efforts on this winery ordinance, and we want to say first of all that we are most appreciative of the hard work that the land use committee's been undertaking on, uh, developing an ordinance, and we appreciate the county understanding the importance of, um, agriculture, viticulture, and the ability to have events at some of the locations, and all of the issues that you're grappling with, so many counties in California are grappling with the same issues, trying to have agricultural with wine, with, uh, wineries and with, um, activities at those wineries. And I have just a couple of comments today. One is procedural. Um, it, it appears as though this is a semi-workshop, and we weren't really clear what the direction is that the board was supposed to be taking today. There isn't really a staff report, and it indicates that an ordinance has been prepared, yet the public has not been provided with that ordinance. We have not seen what the ordinance looks like. We just see a list of criteria. So what I might suggest is it would be helpful if you wanted to have staff perhaps actually draft the ordinance, if that could be provided to the public, and maybe there could be a workshop with the board, or maybe a combined workshop with the board and the planning commission. I, I don't know how your county chooses to do these things, but I think we still have a lot, have a lot of questions that you're trying to answer, number one.
You want that addressed now?
Well, is, if you, if you'd like to speak, of course, Supervisor.
I, I think the language, uh, is not 100% correct. The intent was to come to the board today to vet with the board any changes that the board might want, then to take it back to the land use committee. The instruction was at the last land use committee meeting for staff to start working on putting an ordinance together. It wasn't meant to be here today, and then, um, we'll get the, uh, resolution passed to take it to the planning commission in the future, and that language would go to the planning commission. That's the proposed direction.
Understood. Thank you. Yeah, we would like the opportunity to have more input on an actual ordinance where this criteria is in a body of something, not just some loose criteria out there. So I appreciate that clarification.
I think that, that, that opportunity will come, you know, that...
Thank you.
Once we've drafted something, but we kind of wanted to be able to confer with our other colleagues, because this is the only way we can do that.
Absolutely.
Is here on the dais.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate that input very much. And then just a couple of substantive comments about the criteria. There seems to be an inordinate focus on setback, if I understand correctly, in relation to noise. Now, um, I am a land use attorney. I've done this a long time, and we've had the benefit of being retained, my firm, in the last year, I won't say the name, but by an entity that has purchased probably, uh, 12 wineries in the last couple of years in different jurisdictions, and we had to give them an analysis of what were they allowed to do under their current permits in each jurisdiction, which required that we analyzed every ordinance in relation to their uses. We also do work in Napa and Sonoma and elsewhere with wineries, but in the last year, we've had the opportunity to look at all these. And I will say with regard to noise, generally speaking, it's not so much about setback, it's what's the decibel at the property line that's close to another property owner? And so I'm not sure why the focus on setback in relation to noise, why not the decibel level at a certain period of time?
Well, we, we do have a, we do have an ordinance for decibel level at the, at the, at the property line, but also, uh, it's well-established physics that sound dissipates with distance.
It does, unless your property's in a bowl, which we had a scenario in Sonoma County, where it was hundreds and hundreds of acres, but they were in a bowl, and so the, they had to test the decibel level elsewhere. So I'm just trying to say that setback isn't the panacea necessarily here.
We're not, we're not claiming it to be, but it is, it is utilized by a lot of other county ordinances.
I think we recognized that at the last land use committee, when we said that in circumstances where topography and other issues help mitigate the noise, then a variance could easily be applied for, and, and in this county, it, I've watched it, if it's practical, common sense, then it prevails.
Sure, of course, of course. And then Supervisor Anneto raised the issue, well, um, what about setback in relation to trying to have, if you own several properties, but you're trying to have a couple of different wineries, are you going to be limited in your ability to have events based on the setback? So once again, I don't have the whole context of an ordinance to, I just, so I'm not trying to be critical, but I'm trying to just get you to think, um, maybe how some other jurisdictions might look at this as well. And I know you did look at how other jurisdictions, but I just come from having looked at all these over the last year for this other particular client. So just some suggestions. So we look forward to the opportunity to work further with the committee as this is developed. The, the other, um, issue is the idea of leaving the ordinance and replace and creating a second one, and then certain entities are grandfathered in, meaning if they were legal at the time that it was, um, adopted, the new ordinance, I, I'm not sure that having two separate ordinances is really the best way to proceed, and creating a situation where you have existing wineries who are now non-conforming uses, and then they have to operate under your non-conforming use scenario, I don't know that you really want to create non-conforming uses.
Well, I think one of the issues that comes to mind is a lot of these are Williamson Act contracts, and so we, we can't rewrite the ordinance and apply it to them anyhow. So they have, we have to have somewhere in the code that says, this is what your by-right uses were. I mean, that was one of the reasons for trying to have the two, the two, uh, versions of the ordinances, to allow for what, what was granted and is now, unless they wanted to change it, which they probably don't, then, um, you know, we're kind of, we're kind of stuck with that. Plus, we, we were going to grandfather people, saying that, uh, we're not going to take away anything that you already have, and so that was the reason for having the two ordinances.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. I'm, I'm going to think through that.
I would prefer to have one, two.
Sure.
Like you, that would make it easier, but I, I'm, I, I just think that if we went with one, then people are going to go, well, I was grandfathered and, um, you know, that's, that's what the ordinance allowed me to do in the past, and now there's no record of that, or...
Understood.
We wanted to keep the wording there somehow.
Well, thank you for that clarification. I'll, I'll think through that, um, and s, yeah, see if I have any other ideas in the workshop that may or may not be helpful. Here, right now, I can't think of something, but I appreciate that clarification. And so, um, those were really my key, uh, concerns, the creation of the two ordinances, the use of setback, really focusing on the noise issue, and also the traffic. Obviously, that's a concern everywhere when you have a big event. Um, and I know your counties, every county's a little bit different. Obviously, the topography and, and the location of other uses, um, are, is everyone opposed to maybe parking and having remote transportation into certain areas for certain size events? Is there, um, another business that where they could allow them to park, and then they would bring people in on a jitney or a bus or something like that? I don't know what the, if there's a lot of opposition to that, but that's another option to allow some of these entities to have their larger events, which people are seeking. People come from all over, um, you know, because it's beautiful here, and they, they want to have their wedding in this gorgeous setting and, and celebrate. So is there another way to handle that transportation issue for certain size events perhaps? So just, I, and, and once again, I think you've done a, you know, you've been working really hard on this, and you can, you're not going to please everybody, right? But, uh, just, um, just some other thoughts that you might want to consider, and I appreciate that we'll have the opportunity to participate further in this.
Yeah, just to give you a reference also, part of the, where we're coming for part of this was La Mesa Winery, is where part of this came from. Um, their parking was on the fence line of the neighbor, and the neighbor's home was, uh, probably about 50 foot off that fence.
Right.
So at that point was, and it, it was a gravel, uh, parking lot, so to listen to cars going in and out of this gravel driveway constantly, the limos sitting there idling, you know, even myself, you know, like I told you is that I, I, I'm the designated driver for everybody, and so I let them go in and have fun, and I'm sitting there in my truck and keeping it cool for everybody. So that's part of where all this is coming from.
Of course, and the parking setback that I believe you had mentioned, that's, that's another issue, you know, should they all be parked right there, or...
But I don't think anybody here would be, I don't think anybody here would be, um, upset about off-park, off-site parking.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if somebody was, you know, you know, it, it, the only problem is the Shenandoah Valley does not have a area that is big off-site parking other than other wineries.
Right, I'd have to, yeah, geographically, I'm not, you know, I don't have that picture in my mind. I've been there many times, but I just don't have that, you know, the, the map in my mind, but just trying to think of some other solutions out loud here. So, one, we appreciate you listening. We appreciate your hard work on this, number one. Number two, I'm glad we have the opportunity to work further with you on this. We appreciate that very much as well, and, um, I understand what you're saying about the two ordinances. I'll kind of put my thinking cap on or let my staff, let someone else help me figure that out, see if there are any other solutions. You seem pretty savvy, so I don't know that we have other solutions to that, but we'll think about it. And, um, and with that, once again, I appreciate you listening. I don't want to overstep my bounds on my time here, and my client, uh, Mr. Cherachillo is here as well. He'd like to speak just for a few minutes. I just want to mention, in addition to the eight acres that they own here, they also actually own a very successful winery in, um, in San Carlos as well, if you, Domenico Winery, if you ever wanted to look that up, so...
I'd like, after the public comment, I'd like Mr. Beatty to address the, the two ordinances. I wasn't sold on that at the beginning. It seemed to make sense at the end, so I think it's still in play, but the, the second ordinance seems to make sense. Our council, deputy county council, agreed with that, uh, not our county council or deputy. On the issue of the, um, off-site parking, I mean, it, what we need to remember, I think, about these wineries is they're not a casino or some other commercial, large commercial venue, so I just, I foresee busloads of people being, being, uh, bussed into the location. You know, that, I'm not sure that really meets the agricultural definition. It seems like that's more appropriate to be in a commercial location.
All right.
Like the Amador County Fair, when that happens, I mean, the, a lot of people are being, uh, they have the opportunity to, to be bussed into the location via transit.
And you're not sure that that would be consistent with the general plan designation itself or the zoning? Understood.
I think everybody's afraid of, uh, the commercial aspect creeping in. Weddings are kind of a, a different animal on their own, especially the large weddings.
But, um, it is a, it is an intriguing, uh, you know, possibility, you know, to, and it certainly would, um, reduce traffic to a certain extent, so that's something to keep in mind as we move forward through this.
Thank you. Appreciate your listening, and, yeah, you're not alone. A lot of jurisdictions grapple with this, so you're, you're just going, you're doing what everybody else is doing now, too, so...
One, one thing I'd say as far as a setback, and as it addresses the noise issue, I think having a setback is, it may not be perfect, but it's a little bit of a fail-safe mechanism because depending when you measure that sound, it varies, and then, once people get established, I mean, we are humans and people push limits, you know, and then you got to be out saying, well, how much noise you have? Well, you didn't measure the right place, or there could be, you could have some conflict and controversy over how much noise there is, then you got to have staff going out there saying, well, you're too noisy, um, and they're saying, we're not, and then you have that fight going on. If you get a little bit of space, it normally makes better neighbors, seems to.
Sure. Understood.
As far as what Supervisor Brown brought up as far as the parking, yeah, I think out there on La Mesa, I think it was gravel too, wasn't it? And, you know, it's, I've noticed, I grew up on a ranch, so I see a lot of dirt and gravel roads, and you always got a little bit of dust coming off those. If you got pavement, you might get some, but not much, but, so if you got a house there real close and people are always pulling in and out, you're going to be dealing with dust.
Yeah, I, I think another point is, I know your clients are in the process of... Yeah, I, I think another point is, I know your clients are in the process of constructing something right now. And we had considered at the very beginning that they were grandfathered to, you know, that, those, those uses at this time.
As they are under the Williamson Act. They have a Williamson Act contract as well.
Yeah, so, you know, it wouldn't impact that at this point, even if they're still finishing up.
Understood.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time and your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
Chairman, Board Members, Dominic Chiracillo. Been a property owner here in Amador for 23 years. We bought the old Goffinette Reservoir property. And the reason we purchased that property was because wine has become my passion. It's part of my life. I made wine as a kid with my Italian grandfather in a basement in New York, believe it or not. And I've been, I was in the real estate business for 40 years. I've held a real estate broker's license in two states. And what really makes my life work is making wine and being in the wine industry. And like I mentioned, we bought that property mainly because we wanted to someday fulfill a family vision of having a family-owned winery there. And, and, and that's happening. So the, the current zoning is allowing that and we're grateful for that. I guess our concern is, what about the guys coming in behind us? What about the business owners that want to start a winery? It's a very expensive proposition, opening a winery. The cost is, is immense and, and the wine industry is changing. So, you know, having privileges that allow wineries to benefit and generate income is, is very important, as Mr. Anneto mentioned. So, you know, and Supervisor Axe, you said, you know, we're grandfathered. So, you know, we're grateful for that also. It is really, we're here really for the next people. People that currently own vineyards that someday want to put in a winery, and it's going to be harder for them. People that own land that are zoned by right to put a winery on it, it's going to be harder for them. So, you know, the economic impact, I think, needs to be looked at by the county and by the businesses. You know, there's sales tax and occupancy tax revenue for the county. The, the wine industry, in my opinion, in this county is in the, in its infancy. And it has a huge future. And I believe that the, the winery owners here now are doing a great job. And wine is not just buying and selling wine anymore. We're, we're, we're in the entertainment business. We're here to provide an experience, agricultural-related wine experience. That's what the world is evolving to in the wine industry. And I just, I just want to caution, and you guys have put a lot of hard work into changing this ordinance, but, but think a little deeper. Think about the next guys, you know, and, and where that's going. Our property that we're permitting is 100 acres. So we have a little bit of room. We, we have the ability, you know, to, to spread out. Even though our first building was placed where it is, we, we took a lot of thought and we, we're not, only one neighbor can see the building we're currently building. We have a large hill that we placed the building below the hill so that it doesn't affect the neighbors. So, you know, we're, we're concerned also about our neighbors. And we want to be good neighbors. And so I guess one of the things that really kind of is an issue in the proposed ordinance is it creates a segregated system. And depending on when the winery was legally, you know, operating. So there's one set of rules for a winery already in operation, and then there's a new set of rules for new wineries, which is more restrictive. I don't know the answer, and I'm not saying I do. We, we engaged Diane Kinderman because she's a professional in the industry. And we, we respect her and her knowledge to help maybe work with the county to develop something that will have a better impact for not just the, the new people coming in, but for the county as well. I think the county is going to see some growing pains. I'm, I'm excited that there is a lot of new interest in old buildings, like in Drytown. Someone bought the old hotel and turned it into a, a little hotel and, and restaurant. I thought that was encouraging. I think you're going to see more of that. And I think that's a good thing for the county. It generates traffic. It generates tourism and for not just the wine industry, but for other businesses. You know, coming off the pandemic, it's sad, how many people have gone out of business? And so there's a lot to think about. And we're here just to support the process. And, and we'd love to participate in that process. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Welcome, Dominic. Yeah, one thing I, I do want to add is that we, we, in this proposal, we've increased tasting room hours, the number of days a week and the, the length of time that they're open. So, and then, you know, basically making sure that people can market their wine by participating in AVA events and then wine club events. So we've been very cognizant of, of that aspect of it. We're, I think it's really what we're calling the special events or large social events that may not, you know, fit every, every possible winery, you know, because they, the, the events run late and they, they often can create more of the noise. So that's where potentially there's, you know, there's some issues.
I understand.
I think the other thing, a lot of people recognize we're in our infancy, maybe a little bit beyond that. But what we hear over and over is we don't want to become another Napa. They've grown into a huge animal with lots of issues, especially with traffic on certain days. When I go to Napa, I'll go on a Tuesday, Wednesday to stay out of that. But we don't want to become Napa. We're trying to mitigate that through the, the lengthening of the hours and the days to try and disperse that traffic. But I think our, our viewpoint is we don't see a problem in growing slowly. I mean, you've been here over 20 years and it's taken you that time to develop your, your business plan. I, I like that. It's, I mean, that's the way I want to see most proceed. Yes, it, it presents some hurdles for, for some in the future, but they, they can develop slowly and methodically and, and have a good business plan, then they'll be successful.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dominic.
Hey, anybody else from the public? Anybody on Zoom?
I would like to weigh in as far as not another Napa. I've heard that a number of times also. I've also heard some people say they'd like a little piece of that Napa pie. You know, it's, it's ni, it's nice to have a quaint, a quaint winery. I love Requiem County, but it's also, if you get too quaint, at some point, you're all floating down the river upside down. And I think, I think the board recognizes that. That's just, so it's kind of probably a fine line. We want, we want them to have enough customers that they're, they're doing well. Also, as far, a question I have made for Chuck, say if you're looking at those setbacks, what about if you're on a, on a county road and you want to build a winery 190 feet from your fence line? And then the other part is county road? Say you're at the 200-foot setback.
In that case, I would hope it's one of the county roads that doesn't have a defined right of way, so you can call it to the middle of the, of the highway.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Said this before, but anytime you establish one of these criteria, and, and you have to do it for the setbacks, the first case you're going to get is one foot less than what you asked for, every single time. So the first one is going to be 199 feet versus 200. But there's a, you know, there's a variance process in place and Supervisor Forster pointed out, if, generally if the, if it makes sense, the county tends to go along with.
Okay. That makes sense. Also, I do have some concern about, you know, somebody might have, you know, 10 parcels that meet up like a pie right in the middle. And they want to build a winery, that's the spot to build it. So they have to merge all 10 parcels to build, to build their winery?
I'd, I'd recommend a boundary line adjustment before a merger so that you don't lose the parcels.
Okay, you could probably do that. It'd be a little bit of a pain, but that probably makes sense. And yeah, okay.
Chuck, can you address the two ordinances? Because I wasn't sold on that at the beginning. I'm not sure I'm 100% sold on it still, but.
The, the purpose of the, of the dual ordinance prevents non-conforming uses. So wineries that are, and tasting rooms that are in existence today that are legally operating, there's no impact to them. There's no effect at all. If they became non-conforming, then they automatically get a 10% increase in, in their intensity. And if we're trying to curtail some of the impacts going forward, that seems counterintuitive to allow a 10% increase. It also prevents confusion and conflict with existing Williamson Act contracts because we can't by zoning change those uses. They're stuck with the contract and they, you know, they'll stay that way. So if you have a zone, if you change the zoning ordinance, then there's, you've got some disparity between what's allowed under the zoning code and what's allowed in the, in the contract. That would be very confusing for, for staff going forward. Those were the, those were the two primary reasons to do it, is that there's no impact of the existing legally operating tasting rooms. It would only impact future ones.
You know, to go back to that, multiple parcels, I wonder if we shouldn't do something just to make, make some type of allowance a person owns the parcels? Because what about a person has, say, a commercial parcel, an ag parcel, an R1A parcel? How would you go about doing a boundary line adjustment on those when you have all different zonings and say one's an Ag, Williamson Act contract?
We've, we've done that before, with, you adjust the zoning to match the boundary line adjustment. You just process it at the same time.
Would, would you, but would you have to go through a general plan change?
Potentially.
So I mean, at first glance, it seemed like a probably a realistic solution you have. Like I think, more looked at, it might be a real can of worms if you start trying to do that.
We've done it before. I mean, all in one, all in one act.
You're also looking at a very small, you know.
Yeah. I'm just seeing if somebody owns multiple parcels and they own them, they control them. It's like if, you know, you're out there banging on your woodshed at 1:00 in the morning and you've got four vacant parcels next, next door. They don't care. But now if, now if somebody else owns that parcel next door, that's a different story. I wonder if there shouldn't be some type of allowance if a person has multiple parcels where that can be looked at as meeting that, meeting that criteria as long as they own that parcel.
I'd rather see a variance myself. I don't know what the other board members would, I'm not a variance, a lot line.
How likely is that scenario going to occur where there's commercial next to R1A or, or AG? Because don't, when you do a general plan, don't you designate areas to be, this is your agricultural area? You don't embed commercial necessarily right in.
There aren't any commercial parcels in the Shenandoah Valley.
There are.
Or not.
Okay. So it's not that common of a scenario, you know?
There's, there's, but there's commercial parcel scat, this ordinance is not just for Shenandoah Valley. It's the whole county.
I agree. It is.
You have commercial, you have industrial, you have R1A scattered. R1A is everywhere. There's some industrial here and there, especially different areas, there's commercial scattered around.
Well, if it made sense though, that's when they come in and apply for a zone change or a general plan amendment, anything to be consistent. That's got to be consistent, but to make their business plan work.
I, I don't, yeah, I mean, you could, it could probably do a workaround and climb that mountain to get there. I'm just going, if a person owns multiple parcels, why shouldn't that qualify to meet the setbacks?
Because they're, they're separate parcels. If they want to qualify, they merge those parcels.
So they sell one of them and then now they're not conforming.
Then they can't build a winery.
Well, they already built it, so now it's.
Then the person's buying that parcel is buying it knowing it's there.
They, they can build a winery. If they can't meet the 200-foot setback, they still have privileges.
Yeah, I, I just, um, it's a problem I see, I don't see why it couldn't be allowed, that you'd accept multiple parcels as meeting those, whatever setbacks may be. I just, I'm just looking at, I, I think that's, that's reasonable. I understand that in our intent, but if somebody has five parcels and they want to build something on one of them, what does that? If they sell it, it's already there, the person's buying it.
The problem is they, okay, they get approval, they build on the middle parcel, and then they sell the other four parcels. So then they're basically, they would have been non-conforming, but if we allow it because we're taking all of the five parcels into context, then we're shooting ourselves in the foot.
No, I can tell the board's not buying it, but so I'm in my case and.
Okay. Okay. So direction to, are there any more comments? Yeah. Oh, just, we have another public? Go ahead.
Thank you, Board Supervisors. Pleasure to meet you. I'm Nick Chiracillo. A very interesting conversation here. Our property, even though we're in the state that we are, in construction where we're at, we actually own multiple parcels. Where our current building is, is close to another one of our setbacks. And this whole situation, you know, would apply to us, right, if we weren't grandfathered in. So I, I really think that the mechanisms being used need to be looked at. My other big thing is that, I, I said this to the Land Use Committee, you know, I'm kind of simple. I'm going to use a real simple analogy. It's like going to your favorite restaurant and you look over and one table has a set of menu and they can order all this amazing food. And then the other person comes in a little bit after they sit down. And because they came after they sat down, they get a different menu. And they only get beans and rice on their menu. And this other guy gets chicken piccata and all these amazing dishes, right? We're creating this unplayed, unfair playing field in the industry for everyone that is coming into the business. And I think it's something that's got to be looked at.
I, I agree with you, but, and the but is, we've had some issues with what you're just talking about. That's one reason why we're here.
Totally. It's a complicated one.
If, if, if we were going, you know, we wouldn't be here at all, except for problems. You know, that is the reason why we're here.
I, I, I was at Daniel's backyard. I harvested vegetables with him.
Right.
I hung out there. So I personally totally get it.
And so you know exactly where we're going with this?
Totally get it. When I sat there with him, I said, wow, Daniel, I, I get it.
And so that is.
I was surprised that it was chosen to be put right there, right? So I, I get your, I get it, right? I sat there and I ate carrots and lettuce with him and I felt it, right?
And I think a lot of people in the whole county, especially Shenandoah Valley, I've heard a number of people say, hey, we didn't mind when one person had music, you know, on a weekend. We didn't mind when two people had music on a weekend, but you get, you know, five, six wineries, they're all having music on a weekend and every weekend and some weekdays. And people, people supported, they supported their neighbors, they supported the businesses. At some point, they kind of said, you know, enough. And that's kind of, I think, what the board's reacting to.
Yeah, makes sense. Well, I appreciate your time and, and all the work that you're putting into this to try to get this right for everyone that is moving here to develop and invest in this county. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think we've got enough direction to the Land Committee, unless anybody else has anything else?
I do. After what this young gentleman just said, I'd like to maybe reconsider that multiple parcel question at some point, or maybe even today.
Now's the time to do it. We need board concurrence. That's what we're asking for.
Yeah, it is. And just, it's kind of what I'd brought up and just as luck would have, he, he said, that's kind of the situation they're in. And if they're looking to build a winery with multiple parcels, they'd have to be trying to.
But, you know, that's the whole thing is, is you want to get that restaurant all in one page, then make the parcel all one page. You know, you, you know, you just do a lot line change if you have multiple parcel.
As long as your zoning is.
Well, as we just said, the zoning would move with the lot line change. That's part of the application.
You might have to do a general plan amendment. Those things are, they're, they're not fun.
Well, but that's just something that, that's part of the business plan.
And I guess my question is, well. And I guess my question is, what is the reluctance to not make that allowance?
Um, to me personally, it's because they decide to sell that property. And then we just get another hornet's nest because somebody else doesn't think about it and what, you know, we've seen it time and time again where somebody still builds their home in, in an area that they see a winery, but now they're saying that that noise is too much for them.
Okay. Some truth to that.
So if we try to fix it in the front side, it doesn't hurt us on the back side.
Well, the other thing we're trying to do by, if we go the route of creating a, a second ordinance is you're, you might be making some changes, but you're defining the rules so that people clearly see what they have to expect when they come into our county.
Okay. Do we have direction to, to the, uh, land commission supervisor?
Yeah.
Cruz supervisor.
They need to be commanded for the time they put in, yeah.
Yeah, I'd have a, one thing I meant to bring up earlier and I didn't. Um, on the four, if you got the four hundred foot setback, that's probably a larger parcel. Um, I think it has to be on a mayor major road. There, is there any? What they're saying as far as a lot of them have unlimited events and it looks like there is limited twelve per year. You know, I'd have a question on the larger parcels, if, um, if you want to have it reflect what, what's in the existing ordinance now where they can, um, I think they have unlimited events, um, up to a hundred and twenty-five people.
I think Chuck can speak to that. Most of these allowances are what's allowed now.
Current ordinance allows, uh, yeah, an unlimited number of events with up to a hundred and twenty-five people and then twelve events a year with up to four hundred and fifty.
And if you're gonna have a four to foot setback, you're gonna have to pretty, pretty, pretty big piece of ground. That's.
Sixteen plus acres to get, assuming on a fifty by fifty tasting room.
It's minimum sixteen acres? Um, okay.
Most of the wineries during our meetings, and you attended some of those meetings without speaking, thank you, cause.
I can't, I'd be in trouble.
Most of the wineries want unlimited. They want everything. But then most of them say too, they're not even coming close to what's allowed right now.
Yep, that's only, uh, twelve events per year.
At a hundred and twenty-five and then special events up to four hundred on the four hundred foot setback. And then the wine club, twelve per year at a hundred and twenty-five.
So it, so.
That's a lot of events.
Thirty-six.
That's true.
And then they can be open seven days a week from ten to six.
No, and, and this is kind of the first cut out. So I'm, I'm good, good for the going forward now.
We've, I would say we're beyond the first cut. We're.
Well, I mean, it's for the, the board as far as looking what's coming out of the land use committee and everything else, just the board's first cut at it. It'll be coming back.
It'll come back for the resolution of intention. Once, once we get the language for the second ordinance, if that's the way we're gonna go, right?
Yeah. And really, what's the difference between a wine, wine club event and a social event? Probably not a whole lot really. Well, I guess one's limited to wine club members only.
Yes, and then we didn't want to, we wanted to separate wine club events from social events, okay? Because that wine club events is, is truly a marketing of your wine per se. Rather than just have this big, you know, catchall, social event.
And you have some people that want to be a lot more restrictive than this.
Well, that's true. There's some that don't. No, I understand that.
Supervisor, oh, you're okay with it?
I'm still thinking about, um, as far as, uh, on the special events, as far as the limitation on them.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm good for that for now.
Well, this will go back to.
Well, you'll have, you'll have a chance to think about it, okay?
That's what I was saying earlier. I, I can and I'll get some pushback, but it's still something we still do.
We have concurrence for it to go back to the land commission.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Chuck. We are on to five C. General services review and possible recommendation relative to the purchase of county vehicles.
Chairman, members of board, John Hopkins, General Services Director.
Danielle Whitaker, General Services. Hi.
So, um, I put a lot of information just on one sheet there, but in essence, uh, we need to have a little flexibility in the future when it comes to buying vehicles, basically. So what I've asked the board to do is, is to, in this particular case, it's unique, kind of like the tree mortality thing, uh, where, uh, you, you give me, uh, I think it was, I forget what the dollar amount was, uh, up to a million dollars a year to spend on fleet vehicles only. Not, not heavy equipment, not specialized vehicles, but fleet vehicles. And to dispense with the formal bid process, um, for this particular issue. And I would say in perpetuity until that, uh, until the environment changes when it comes to procuring vehicles. Just because all the, the things I listed here and the difficulty with, with actually meeting the needs of the departments and buying the vehicles timely without them increasing, sometimes eighteen, twenty percent by the time we actually get around to buying them. Danielle has a, a lot more knowledge in this area than I do. Even the state contracting pricing isn't working out anymore for various reasons, but you, you can add to that if you want.
John mentions that the pricing changes from budget season that we have till purchasing time. But it also has been changing state contract pricing. We've been cutting purchase orders. And then as soon as the order goes through, we're notified by the state contract pricing that the increase is twenty, about fifteen to twenty percent. So we're cutting change orders. And then we're also not getting the vehicles in the manufacturing circuit. So we're a couple of years behind. We still have a vehicle that we've purchased in twenty twenty-one for facilities and we, it's still not in production. We're still waiting for it. And it's a continual basis and we're such a small county, we don't have a plethora of vehicles to have the luxury of waiting for these long periods of time. So we suggest that we dispense of the bidding process and try to get the vehicles as quickly as possible. Just to give you an example, I cut a purchase order for state contract pricing in September of twenty twenty-two for an Explorer. The original price was thirty-five thousand. I got a change order request on September twenty-second, twenty-second of twenty twenty-two for forty-one thousand. Still have not gotten the vehicle. Also, I cut a purchase order for an Explorer and it was thirty thousand and still have not gotten the vehicle. I canceled that order and I purchased a vehicle after getting three quotes from a commercial lot for a thousand dollars less.
We have to go through the purch, all the purchasing rigmarole. Can, can you do it somewhat informally and like go around and find a guy's pickup in his parking lot, like, like my son-in-law did with you, John?
Well, we just, uh, yeah, we just did that for Jeff Gardner's truck.
But we'd want to still get all new vehicles. We'd still want the warranties. We'd still want to get three quotes and do the purchasing process the way we need to do it in the proper way and to get the most efficient.
What's the proper way? Maybe the proper way is to get the best deal, though.
It's the best value?
It is the best value. I think I, did I mention that? I think I mentioned that. But to give me the, instead of having to come back to the board to waive that formal bid process, just for you to do it. In, in fact, I'd even go as far as, when I got my head around this a little bit, I'd even go as far as to say that, that between the CAO and I, we, we know, fleet vehicles are somewhat routine. We know that they're gonna be approved typically through the, the budget process. I'd even go as far to say that even before you approve it through the bud, budget process, if staff has confidence that that's gonna, we have the money there. We've talked to the budget director, the auditor, CAO. We know that it's gonna, then we take, you allow me the, the opportunity even go get that vehicle sometimes even before it's even budgeted. I know that's a little out there to say that even, but the, 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 the problem with vehicles is actually getting them sometimes. Cause we're losing it to higher bidders. You, you see it now on vehicles all the time. They're marking things up for a market, uh, adjustment. That's what they call it. And you're losing the opportunity. Uh, we just bought a, a crew cab, uh, vetted out the needs of the department for waste management for Jeff Gardner. I got lucky. I just happened to be at Folsom Lake Ford and talking to their fleet guy. And they had one on a lot. And I came back and Danielle was getting ready to sign for Sonora Ford. But yet Folsom was cheaper. We cut that deal and got that, that pickup. But her folder for that pickup is like that. So it's taken a lot of effort to find the right vehicle, find it within those budget amounts. Because, and, and to deal with.
And secure the vehicle before it's sold.
To secure it, right?
And secure the pricing before it raises again.
Anyway, so I, I just would recommend that the board waive the formal in this particular case. It's kind of like, um, some of our IT equipment where we standardize things, we waive things. But in this case for fleet vehicles to give us the authority to, to spend those dollars, uh, and, uh, waive the formal bid process in that particular area. So that we're not constrained with meeting the needs of the department.
How often would you be reviewing the fleet order system to verify if it's still out of whack to, to going to ordinary?
Daily?
Okay.
And not only, particularly at budget time, cause I reached out to other counties to see how they were doing things. And they were complaining about the state contract pricing and that they are still using their older vehicles, but they had an overabundance of vehicles. So they could wait for these timelines, but they were making consistent change orders and paying higher prices. And I asked what they were doing as a solution and some of them that I spoke with said they weren't doing anything as of yet. They were waiting out the process. We don't have the luxury of.
I get where you're, I, I think I get where you're going with this. I think as a, um, sort of a safeguard, uh, it would be reviewed. I would say add to the recommendation to say that this gets reviewed during the budget process with the board each year.
Yes.
How you go?
Now, uh, the second question that I have is GSA vehicles. Have we ever thought about GSA vehicles?
We have a lot of vehicles like my vehicle, uh, and we're getting tighter on this issue. I talk with vehicles about, with Chuck on a regular basis. We get hand-me-downs, but that's starting to not.
Hand-me-downs is part of you.
We're pretty tight with.
No, I, I'm talking actually, you know, the, a GSA lease, you know, program, you know, the, the, the federal government GSA lease program. Or can we even participate in that?
Yes, we can. Yes, we, we can. Uh, right now it's still cheaper to buy a vehicle.
Okay.
And it's cheaper to the departments because even though we may depreciate that vehicle over a five, seven or ten year process, sometimes those vehicles aren't putting the miles on it that the department anticipated and that vehicle will go fifteen years. And they're not paying into that lease program. Cause once you, once you bite off that apple, once you take that lead, you are leasing in perpetuity forever. And so I, I've been resistant to that. We are starting to look at leasing for heavy equipment. That's been successful in Reno for many, many years up there for heavy equipment as an option to, um, provide a solution to the, the, the funding constraints when it comes to heavy equipment.
Right.
John, if you, I was over at Thompson's a couple of weeks ago and there was five or six new GMC pickups and every one of them had a disclaimer next to the description that these parts are not on this vehicle. You have to buy it. Do you ever get a notice of that, that you can get a vehicle, but like you can't get heated seats?
Yes, absolutely.
There's nothing safety wise, but it's always an accessory, I guess, that they don't make or.
The chip, the chip shortage?
Is that what it was? Chip shortage?
So a lot of times you'll have to take your vehicle in after a certain period of time. Once the chip comes in, sometimes two to five years, what we're finding. And then you can have your heated seats or your, you know, electric windows or.
Did you say, did you say two to five years?
Sometimes with the chip problems. Yeah, that's what we're finding.
Wow.
But we haven't accepted any vehicles that are missing a chip as.
I thought computers were supposed to save us.
Listen, my, my, my twenty-two Ford that came in, I waited four months for the Ford badge to get on the truck. So I took the truck without it saying two fifty, Larry. So it doesn't really matter if it's a chip. It, it, it's as I mentioned, uh, in here with the materials. It could be plywood or metal or anything that, that's, that's got a supply chain issue. And even when you, the vehicles that are, are coming that you see online, the dealers for fleet, we always used to get much better pricing for fleet. It, it's starting to, to, to merge between retail and fleet. And these dealers are really just becoming a broker. And the way they're dealing, dealing, dealing with this is like Amazon. You're just ordering your vehicle. It's just a destination for it to show up at their shop. But they're, you go to any dealership today, their inventory is way, way down.
And when you go online to check the vehicles, you see all these beautiful pictures and all these prices? And then when you call? Well, that's one's not even here yet. It's in transit and we don't know when it will be here.
I had Danielle, I, I said, okay, we're gonna get smart about this. Reach out to Sacramento, San Joaquin and El Dorado counties and we want to piggyback on their, their contracts.
They're using state contract pricing.
They're using, yeah, you wanna.
Yeah, they're using the state contract pricing as I mentioned before.
And they're waiting, like, okay, we're doing better than these guys. As well as they're also, uh, they have quotas. So if you had five hundred vehicles you bought last year, Ford or GMC or Chevy's going, we'll give you two hundred and fifty this year. Uh, so they don't want to play, so it, it, it reduces that mass playing together in, in the sandbox, so.
Yeah, no, it's kind of interesting because during the whole COVID debacle a long time ago, I said, I'm more worried about what we're, what we're doing because of COVID than COVID. And it relates to that because it all goes back to that. I was talking to a local business. He was saying he went to a job a while back during COVID. The ladies, forty-something year old kid came out, oh, oh gee, you know, noon time or whatever it was. You know, just waking up and, yeah, he's, I get so much money from the government a month, uh, to do nothing and started showing his workers how much he got, how to push all the little buttons. His whole crew quit on him. And so, I mean, what we did was really, I mean, it, it hurt us and, um.
Now, there, there's another aspect that I, I didn't put in here, uh, with, with vehicles, but I'm gonna, I'll talk about it for just a second. Because, and I didn't think about it at the time, but I'm thinking about it now because of the cost of these vehicles. And I'm starting to see the, the fleet and the retail start to merge in far as cost goes, which is not a good thing. Cause we, we, over the years have saved millions of dollars actually with fleet in the last thirty, forty years with, with fleet sales. With that said though, um, frequently departments will through grants, buy a vehicle and they don't put that vehicle into the pool. Now that's a mistake in my opinion. And I, I, Chuck and I have had these conversations because I've been around a long time. Grants come and go. And eventually when you have a department that's got six or eight or ten vehicles and that grant funding isn't there to, to support it, they're coming to you asking for those general fund dollars. So we encourage departments every time they buy a vehicle to put that into the pool so they're paying a little bit at a time. And that's more important today than it was even twenty years ago because of the cost of vehicles and the rise of the cost of vehicles. Unless you want to get hit with trying to figure out where you're gonna come up with those dollars.
Need to put a label on the side of the truck that says, this is a grant vehicle, one-time pay-for vehicle?
We, I have those conversations with every depart, with departments that, that go down that route. They understand it. I'm just making that point. So if they come to you going, hey, we need six or eight more vehicles, maybe a little better planning would have been better for, for them to figure that out, so.
It's another reason why we stay with the standardization as much as possible as well, so that we can utilize. We had an accident with the sheriff's office vehicle and now we are utilizing another door from that vehicle, an old vehicle with this vehicle.
Right.
Really important for us to, to stay standardized.
So these vehicles aren't getting to us for two years sometimes and even longer with buildups. Uh, it depends on the buildup, especially with pursuit vehicles. Anyway, all of that folds into it. So my recommendation is if you, if you set that amount of, okay, hop, you can GSA purchasing, you can spend up to a million bucks a year. We're gonna waive the formal, uh, bid process for vehicles and you're gonna review it every year at budget time, this process with the board during the budget process.
Million dollars of budgeted funds.
Correct. I do want to make that caveat that if, if, I probably should have that discussion with you. If we, if we are in need of a vehicle and we know that it's fifty-five thousand today before it gets to the budget process, but we're convinced the CAO's office, myself, auditor, budget director, we're convinced that that's gonna get funded. I'd like a little liberty to buy that vehicle because I know that by the time it goes from February, March to July, you're gonna add ten or fifteen thousand dollars to that vehicle potentially. And I just don't think that's cool for the tax. you're going to add $10,000 or $15,000 to that vehicle potentially, and I just don't think that's cool for the taxpayers. So if we have a little bit of that, if that knowledge that will happen, and we use our good judgment, uh, to get that best value when we can, i- if that's acceptable, I, somehow, I don't know how to
No, but a lot of
Yeah, I look at Kelsa going, I don't know how you wag that.
A lot of those vehicles that he's speaking of don't necessarily, I think that's not a very, um, likelihood, because a lot of our vehicles get purchased right in the beginning of our fiscal year to the end of our fiscal year. So, I mean, to the middle of our fiscal year, so that the end of the fiscal year, we're not having a lot of vehicle purchases unless it's an emergency. And so that would be a rare case.
And that that's where the caveat can go, if it's an emergency purchase.
Right.
Okay, um, we need to go out to public, unless the board has any questions? No questions? Public? Oh, got one coming.
Good morning. My name is Cindy Gramboise. I think what they're saying makes a lot of sense. We bought a brand-new pickup truck, ordered it December, uh, 2021, did not receive it until January 2023. Because we were locked in, we were able, uh, to get the truck at the same price. But that truck that I bought went up in value over $20,000, uh, to get something comparable. The the only thing that I would like to change is that I would like the process reviewed at six months rather than waiting a full year, just to see if anything has occurred, any changes you want to make. But, uh, other than that, I support it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, it's back to the board.
I'd move to approve the staff recommendation, giving staff leeway to make some common sense decisions, working with our CAO. And, um, if there are changes, Mr. Hopkins, I'm not going to require it. But I think, um, common sense says you'll bring that back to us if there are substantial changes that require this policy to change.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back here at 10:40.
So we're, are you buying two man?
Working on addendum one, which is five D, State Route eighty-eight Pine Grove Improvement Project, signing the exit three dash I request for local advanced construction authorization. Come on up, Mark. Oh, Rich? Okay.
Morning Board Chairman, Rich Fila.
Morning.
What you have before you is a, it's kind of a formality issue. What happened? The federal government kind of rescinded and unobligated COVID relief funds that were earmarked, not earmarked, that were set aside for this project. And what that had done is it put the, in particular, the contingencies for this project at a low level. And so as we're nearing the point where we're able to move forward to get this thing authorized for construction, the, this is kind of a notice saying that if we move forward to construction, the contingencies for this are low. And the ability to fill that void with appropriate CMAC money comes out in October. So we're in this time or in between. The, from a practical standpoint, once this project is authorized for construction, we'll be able to move unused right-of-way funds into construction, which will more than cover this temporary deficiency. There's about a million dollars of unused right-of-way funds on this project that we can move over into construction once that phase has been obligated by Caltrans. So from a practical standpoint, there's not really a risk here about coming up short with funding and what have you. It's kind of a timing issue.
This is if Caltrans did it, or the county did it?
Correct. Yeah.
But if we don't do this right now, we will lose the funding?
Well, not so much that is. This is the last hurdle that we see before Caltrans is authorizing to move forward with construction obligation for the project. And so we could put this in place, we get this document authorized or set up so that the project can move forward and get obligated into construction. That doesn't change the ability of the board, because I know there's some issues the board has with the project. It doesn't change anything with that. The board still has all its options in front of them if they want to move a different direction. But if the direction they want to move is to keep moving with the project, we're ready to go. If this doesn't go through, the obligation gets put on hold and then we're, and we've been fighting to try to get to this point for the last two or three years. And we're right at this point now. And so to me, it makes sense for us to at least get to that point and that we get ourselves set up to move forward and move forward with the construction phase of the project. Again, the board still has the ability to take this a step, to maybe step back from that. But at least we're set up and ready to go. We've done everything. We were trying to be proactive. Don't want to be put in a situation where Caltrans would come back to us and say, well, we told you what we needed to do. You guys sat on it. And now we're in a predicament because of your inability to move forward or whatever. So in my opinion and view, it would behoove us to take this and get this taken care of. It doesn't obligate us to do anything that we don't want to do. But it does put us in a position that if we want to move forward, we're ready to go. So that's, I don't see a risk or a, it doesn't tie your hands in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, to the board.
Question on that. Wouldn't this be committing the CMAC funds though?
Mark Hopkins, Public Works. The funds were actually already committed per several emails from the state. So they were going to be put onto this regardless.
When was that done?
I have current emails from several weeks ago, or actually last week. So they were going to be moving forward with this with the understanding that if we go ahead and do this formality, those funds will be able to be transferred over. If we don't move with this formality, what ends up happening is they do, we are not first in line for obligation. They're ready to go. This is just a formality. Soon as we give them this, they say yes. We get our E seventy-six, we go to construction. If we don't do so, we could potentially go to the back of the line.
Well, all I'm saying is these CMAC funds, wouldn't they be used elsewhere?
Actually, no, because for CMAC, you have a, they are congestion and air quality. We really don't have congestion and air quality in most of the county, other than a couple of intersections that is controlled by the state.
Could cities use them?
They have to apply for them.
Mr. Gedney, would you, could you maybe add any light to this issue? Is there ways those CMACs could be used on other county projects? I think there might be.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Gedney, ACTC. The CMAC money was a portion to the county several years ago. We were in non-attainment status. Those months, the portionment that Mark's talking about was programmed to the Pine Grove project along with this current year portionments, the two years, years ago. The ACTC programmed this money on the Pine Grove project years ago as part of the entire funding package. To answer your question about whether it can be applied to other projects, yes, it can. Mark's right. Any other, we do a call for projects. We did a call for projects years ago. You'll remember you were chair of the ACTC when we did that. Some of the funds were allocated to Amador Transit for a bus purchase. Some were allocated to City of Jackson for upgraded charging stations, what have you. So we have various uses that those CMAC funds are eligible for. Essentially just have to show an ability to either reduce congestion or improve air quality.
Yeah, okay. Just, I guess my concern is, I've had issues with the project for quite a while. It's, I think the intent around the school was probably a good intent. I was talking to this person a while back, a couple of different engineers had told me, which I, maybe I should look that closer, but the engineers said, hey, they had a plan. This should, this would help with the traffic at the school, as far as bringing the road out on Pine Grove Volcano Road. And then talking to a couple of other engineers, and they're like, hey, you're just changing the point of conflict from point A to point B and spending a lot of money doing it. And I thought about what they said, and I thought, you know, it kind of makes sense. So I'm kind of going, you know, we got this project here. And reflecting back, I think maybe, maybe we made the wrong decision. And my, part of my concern is that we're to go forward, keep barging forward, and maybe we got something that maybe wasn't the right decision. We spent a lot of money on it. I won't say we haven't. I had concerns there were some other parts of the project, and we made it a lot smaller. But looking at it, I think we should, especially some of the stuff we're doing, it's on a state highway. I'm still in a position, we should say, hey, here it is, Caltrans. We've done the legwork. And if they want to, if they have the money and can help us with it, we'd say, we thank you very much and let them carry that ball, because it's a state highway. We're taking over maintenance of sidewalks. That's going to be ongoing, and it's a state highway. So that's where I'm at. And I don't know, so if this money couldn't be used elsewhere, if you need it for the project, okay, maybe we can go along with that. But if we use it somewhere else, somewhere beneficial, I'm a little bit concerned that we might be allocating it towards this project, period. We can't, we can't, we can't take it back.
How much money have we spent to date that's not reimbursable?
As far as I know, zero. Everything that I've seen from when the engineering firm that took over from previous, when it was handed over and went into what's known as PSNE, which is the preliminary engineering and all that, up through to right-of-way, we have been reimbursed for everything currently.
From where?
That, those numbers are before my time. And from what I've understand from Mr. Gedney, there was some money prior to that ACTC put in, but I do not know those numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have your funding costs. Oh, you don't have that. We have a table here that we can show you. Environmental, actual costs, environmental was programmed at around three point four million, actual costs were two point two seven five. Those were all reimbursed. Right, the planned specification estimate, PSNE, was programmed at one point six million, and one point four one oh million was spent, all reimbursed, local funds, actually, the RIP funds. The right-of-way programming was three point one eight nine million to acquire the right-of-way throughout the corridor. And of that, a million dollars is projected as savings that could be moved to construction. So if your question is how much has been spent so far, the total would be three point six and another two point one, so.
That money came from where? Federal government and federal and state money?
That was all Amador Region, Regional Improvement Program funds, all the Amador Region funds. The only federal money that was spent was a four hundred thousand dollar demo earmark.
We've spent a lot of local money on this to date.
Six, approximately six million.
And what is the bid estimate going forward, the engineer's bid for the project?
Eight point two, I believe.
Additional, right?
That's construction cost.
And our share of that is?
Everything but one point two five million. Caltrans is pitching in one point two five million to help.
Yippee. I do feel better we've been reimbursed, but, because I was going to say, we're chasing good money after bad. Now we're just spending bad money on a state highway project. And this is probably our last chance to say, hey, we took it from shovel-ready to bid-ready. And for, we were going to, I was going to argue that we're not wasting money, because we did for eight million to get the right-of-ways, or six point two. If they wait ten years and build it, it'd probably cost Caltrans twenty. So there is a value that they have. We just, times have changed. It's hard for me to say that we can fix, can't fix a county road, because we're spending money on a state highway.
I think that's kind of it.
I may not be the smartest guy that ever lived, but that's a dumb idea.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
And I spoke in general.
If I could, Mr. Chair, address Supervisor Netto's comment about the project itself, the, how, the quality of the project.
Right.
It started off as an analysis of bypass options through Pine Grove. And I think that you can see in the number, the two point two seven five million for environmental, that money was spent analyzing all the potential alternatives. There were seventeen bypass alternatives that had to be studied. All of them had to come up with conceptual scope and cost. All of them were thrown out. One of the bypass alternatives was estimated to cost two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty million dollars. They were on the order of seventy to two hundred and fifty million dollars, these seventeen alternatives. Because of the lack of funding and the county taking the project over, recognizing the lack of funding, that project was down scoped from seventy million down to forty million. That was when we had an MOU with Calaveras and Alpine. We thought we could cobble, get cobble together funds to at least get forty million. That money wasn't available either. So from forty million to where we are currently, getting down to eight million for a project that still meets the purpose and need, provides the safety of the school, gets a break with a signal at that volcano intersection, improved crossing for pedestrians, and some sidewalks. Those aren't as exciting. But I see that as a real good work on the part of the county, to bring that cost down to something that we could actually have the, we could cobble together the funding to get that done.
You know, there may be some truth to that, Mr. Gedney, but the other problem is, to Supervisor Cruz's point, it is still a state road. I see the state has a lot of money. They're widening McCallum River Bridge, which I mean, I can't recall of anybody having an accident there, because that bridge is, I guess they're saying, doesn't meet standards as far as the width. I think it's big money. I want to say it's like eight, ten million dollars, something like that. And I look at our county roads, some are pretty atrocious. I think they're probably, I don't know if I want to say they're safety hazards, but they're, they don't leave, they sure leave a lot to be desired. And they're in desperate need of some funding. So why, I'm thinking, why don't we let, put this on the shelf? We've done the heavy lifting, the legwork, and Caltrans can look at it. And if they come up with some extra money, the project's there, ready for them to go. And we can take, we can take the money we're going to save, and we can fix quite a few of our roads.
Right.
Local county roads.
That option, as Richard mentions, is still on the table. All this action today will do is keep the project moving forward for someone to construct. If you're going to, you're going to have the opportunity, hopefully, at your next meeting, to have the district director, Dennis Agar, appear, and you can discuss with him the potential of having Caltrans take it over for construction, it'll be even more ready.
And I will say, I think you've all done some good work. Not, I'm not beating on the quality of your work. I think you've done a good job, what you've done. I just think their direction should probably change. And if you're saying.
That's not what this.
No, I'm going with that right now. So you're saying this CMAC is really, there's not really a whole lot of other places that funding can be used for?
Right. And the timing is difficult for us, because there's, it's use-it-or-lose-it funding. We have a deadline coming up at the end of September, actually, where we'd have to find a way to protect it with a swap with another agency, which is kind of a little onerous to go through that process. But we're up against a deadline to have that obligated to a phase, a construction phase.
So if you did a swap with another agency, would that make those funds more fungible, flexible?
We tried that with another set of funds. We did that before, and it doesn't really make it all that much more flexible. It just actually gives you more time, is all.
Okay.
Any other board members? Okay, we don't have anybody in the public, anybody on Zoom. Okay, it's back to the board.
I'll make a motion then to approve the requested actions, to approve Exhibit Three I, and authorize the chairman's signature on the agreement.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Nay.
Okay, it'll be a three-two vote. Thank you very much.
And as John mentioned, the board requested to have our District Ten Director appear, and that's scheduled for your next board meeting.
Is he going to appear in person or on Zoom?
That I cannot tell you. I don't know yet.
I truly hope he appears in person.
I think there would be some benefit to that as well.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Supervisors, before you move on, I just wanted to point out, on the addendum agenda, it does show that a four-fifths vote was required. That's not correct. A three-fifths vote does pass. So just to clear up the record, you are not appropriating these funds. You're simply authorizing.
Okay, so now they're authorized.
My money.
Thank you.
Hey, next item, I think one of the board members needs to leave the room.
Oh, yeah. Let me gather up some stuff here, and I'll be out here in a second.
So the next item is addendum to intergovernmental agreement between Buena Vista Rancheria, Miwuk Indians, and the county of Amador. County Council Gillette?
Yes, morning supervisors. So this, this is an addendum to our existing intergovernmental agreement with the, with the Buena Vista Rancheria regarding off-site impacts from the casino. It, it is a, it is a requirement of the tribe's compact with the state of California. There's been some recent litigation and a decision out of the Ninth Circuit that sort of calls into question some of the language in the compact that does lead into our intergovernmental agreement. And so the tribe has indicated that it's going to most likely initiate some litigation against the state regarding its compact. And so our intergovernmental agreement is sort of in play as well. The tribe has some payment obligations coming up under our agreement. And to avoid us also getting into litigation with the tribe at this time, the recommendation is for us to sort of at least temporarily move their payment obligation down the road a little bit. This, this agreement moves it down thirty days. We're going to continue talking. We may end up moving it more or coming up with some other agreement. But that's what this agreement does today. It moves their payment obligation that's from July thirty-first, thirty days into the future. And really, that's all it does. It preserves all our arguments and everything else. But it does prevent either the tribe or us needing to initiate any litigation about our IGA while they sort of figure out what, what to do with the compact. And just, just one clarification. This agreement, it might have a little, a few typos corrected before it gets signed. If you'd noticed, there's the number, the page numbers are at the top of the page instead of the bottom. I think that's going to get cleaned up. But in, in substance, it will generally be this.
Any questions from the board members? Okay, anybody from the public on Zoom? Okay, anybody from the public on Zoom? Okay, back to the board.
I'll make a resolution, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
The addendum.
The addendum to the IGA between the County of Amador and Buena Vista Rancheria for, I guess, thirty days. Okay.
Okay, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that'd be four zero one. Somebody want to grab? Two minutes? Supervisor Anetto to come back? Ron? We're five F, review and possible approval of July eleventh, twenty twenty-three Board Supervisor Meeting Minutes.
We'll approve with minor, minor corrections.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. This meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, August eighth, at nine AM. Closed session begins at eight thirty. Thank you very much.